So we will open the planning board meeting for Tuesday, February twenty seven, twenty twenty four. This meeting is being conducted pursuant to the in a hybrid manner pursuant to the general laws. If you're recording that is fine, you just need to let us know. Anybody recording? Okay, seeing none. Uh, this will be recorded and uh put online as well as minutes um at the.
Hey cherish. Can I minute?
Meeting.
We're getting closer, yeah?
Yeah, we are. Alright, um seven o'clock town of planners reports.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's run through a few business related announcements. Uh, we do have like a daily case that there is here. Press release was issued uh yesterday to all department board committees, missions and citizens. That a deadline of Friday, March thirty first, two thousand twenty four has been set for just the middle of any and all articles for the special and annual town meeting. We are hoping like hearing tonight um to discuss and consider amendments to one eighty five, twenty eight, nonconforming use of structures and lots. Um, but if there's anything else that comes up, please let me know. Uh, I have been coordinating with town council for the acceptance of Cody Lane and La Corrie Drive. And I will be inquiring with them as to whether or not any changes to the wireless cell communications facilities uh by law will be um coordinated through their office as related to the town's ability or lack thereof to impose the burdening equipment without compensation on uh facilities as they're constructed.
That is the um what's the meeting schedule?
The next one is March twelve. Twenty six.
You said March thirty first?
March twenty.
I mean, uh, no, for the, I'm sorry, for March thirty, it's the deadline?
Oh, yes, we, I think this is uh some general uh request um. We do have certain abilities to, as long as we open those hearings early enough, we can lead along into uh and then the content.
Something at the last.
It is kind of a planning board specialty.
Yeah. Why break tradition?
That's, that's.
Uh, but we have two before that, and then we have April ninth, I think we also need it um.
Yeah, it's not, not a problem. Uh, okay, the next piece of information out there, uh, the select board uh has issued correspondence to the planning boards. I might as well revisit. The select board after February thirteenth, we were meeting, discussed the creation of the master plan implementation committee. This we submitted and the planning board. The planning board suggested it be three residents appointed by the planning board, a select board member to be nominated by the select board, and a planning board member would be nominated by the planning board. The planning board also stated that this group would be a subcommittee of the planning board. I know that there had been vigorous discussion and debate on this topic on the master plan committee. And with the proposal from the planning board was a deviation from the M P C A. Our opinion, as discussed during the February thirteenth meeting, since many of the master plan recommendations items fall outside the turvy of land use, that the subcommittee should fall under the select board. The select board voted approved the creation of a master plan implementation committee consisting of three residents appointed by the select board, a select board member to be nominated by the select board, and a planning board member to be nominated by the planning board. One thing we did not determine as of yet is a suggested term length for each member respectively, Doug Moeven, select board chair. Coming out of this correspondence, I see a couple of action items. The first would be the suggested nomination by the planning board of a member to the M P I C. Uh, and we currently have application letters of intent from three individuals. Corey Rowland, Norm Schuber, and most recently Gene Cubey. Uh, for the resident growth on the map for information. So uh with the the board's blessing, I will certainly coordinate and need uh and pass along those letters of the interest um to the reselect board.
Okay. I mean, I will just say, I, I don't. Maybe I can look back to see how it was communicated, but I think the discussion that we had was that it would stay as a subcommittee of the planning board for the first year to see whether there was anything we needed to do to step in before it became an independent committee that has had no control by anybody. And so I would hope that that is the same intent of the select board. I mean, I don't think it's right to have that committee under a board. Uh, we did it simply because there was some pushback and trying to sort of make sure that it had its legs for the first year, but it was never intended to be a, a subcommittee going forward on a annual basis. It was meant to be a uh in independent committee. So I mean, I would hope that that's the select board. That was our discussion. I, I I presume that the select board heard it, but that was our intent. So I would hope that that's their intent as well. Um, okay. Anything else on?
Yeah, a few more things to keep running through here. Uh, okay, give me just a moment. Uh, mostly to your attention, Mr. Dory, they, they have been set for the planning board uh budget like hearing.
Yeah, fantastic.
March ninth, uh eight thirty A M. That is Saturday.
Yeah.
I'm happy to attend this evening. You may hold on to that if you'd like. Let's. I do have an update on the current court case regarding the town of Southwood versus Old Farm Golf Club LLC and others. This is for the incomplete infrastructure over at the Ranch subdivision. Here's where it gets, but you ready?
Oh, I'm, I've been waiting for this.
I was really hoping to pry myself for this, but we're, we're doing it live. Uh, alright, so as you may recall, the town has filed suit against the developers um and the property owners association regarding the incomplete status of infrastructure at the Ranch subdivision. Uh, there was a motion filed on behalf of the property owners association. Uh, excuse me, their counterclaims. Well, um essentially that the town breaches duty and was liable for negligently releasing the covenant in two thousand thirteen, but holding developer to its obligation. The town moved to dismiss that counterclaim. And we've got to come to business here. The town's motion to strike the Sunny Side Ranch Property Owners Association Incorporated's motion to submit additional documentation was allowed.
That's more procedural.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and the town's motion to dismiss the defendant Sunny Side Ranch State's Property Association, these kind of things. Um, pursuant to master law, excuse me, Massachusetts law is a lot was allowed. So the bottom line is uh, there was a counterclaim against the lawsuit.
Against the town.
Against the town and the town to dismiss that counterclaim, and that was allowed. How's that? That close out?
This is gonna be a weekly segment.
I love doing new things, perhaps not in the middle of the. Oh, my goodness. Alright, so let's uh, let's move along with the meeting. You're all set?
I'm, I'm done.
I'll get a title and everything. All right, public comment. Anybody have anything for the board tonight that is not want to bring up? Okay, seeing nothing, we will then continue public hearing for six sixty two A College Highway proposed self-storage facility, special permits like planable and stormwater management permit applications. And we have a request, is that right?
That's correct. I received a uh email request uh from Mr. Boyle asking that maybe continue to the next meeting.
To the next meeting, which you said what, what be? Perfect. So that's why I don't, so do I hear a motion to continue six sixty two A Highway at the seven ten P M on March twelfth?
Dave's been so moved.
Richard, I'll sing a second.
Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Dave's been aye.
Dick out singer, aye.
It's not nice.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
Alright, um seven fifteen, continued public hearing, two fifty new way to propose renovation, reconstruction of a pre-existing nonconforming multifamily dwellings, special permit and site plan admissible application. Mister Lebeck. I need you. How are you?
Anybody here to make for this? Anybody here? If you want me to uh, if I can send for private. That's a, that's a feeling I know well.
If it pleases the board, I can make a brief presentation and then we can chat.
Please.
Uh, for the record, Rob Lebeck, tomorrow Lebeck Associates here this evening. Looking at an existing property, this, the subject property is located on College Highway. Um, you add this, you do fifth, uh, two fifty College Highway. Um, there's a, there's an existing structure there, kind of colonial style house with a front gabled roof. It had four units in it. Arguably went dark. Really don't have any good information to prove that anybody was there within the last year, so that the inhabitants within the last year is really hard to prove. Um, there was some access according uh to the owner. They were using it to visit family members here and there, but arguably can't prove anything. Water bill is very minimal, et cetera, that type of thing. So under the current zoning, we would have loved to try and do a pre-existing nonconforming structure, keep it within the existing footprint for the regulations. And reestablish the four uses, but more so in like a townhouse, you know, style use facing kind of the side, you had access and whatnot. So that was the previous uh sketch that you had seen. I believe we have a way forward, but I think we would lose a couple of units. Um, so under chapter forty eight, section six, um, a lot that arguably predates designing regulations, so it currently doesn't meet the zoning, but did at the time of the creation of the lot. Back when the house was built, whenever a long time ago, um, the idea would be that we could use the lot for the purposes of constructing a single-family home or two-family. There's a grant, there's basically a grandfatherly provision vested rights in forty eight, section six. So that's what we're thinking. We're thinking that that also would be coupled with a submission to the planning board related to a duplex, which I believe is requires cycling approval. Um, so wanted to kind of switch gears a little bit, try to fit within something because there was really no way forward. I think we all talked about it. It made sense to me. Everything makes sense to me. Um, but certainly, you know, it seemed like it made sense to other people. Uh, but again, there's no current way forward. I think that's maybe the subject you're reading later tonight, Scott pre-existing nonconforming. And how do you have a way forward for some of those items? So that's where we're at. So um, we're not in an immediate rush to try to think. But we wanted to present it to you, see if this made more sense. I do believe is a way forward. I'm not sure if your town planner has had time to communicate with um, Mr. Beglane, um, town attorney on this or?
The communication has not come to a close just yet.
It's not like, it's not.
Oh, is it? Oh, man. So to that point, uh, we'll have that answer soon.
Okay.
Robin and Pokedel chart, um, which I've.
Um, I don't, so I'm actually happy to answer any questions through the chair. Um, but otherwise, you know, you want to see where town council through where there was a way forward, if there's adjustments to the application that are needed, or we need to re-advertise or certain to that, but that's, that's the general idea.
Sort of regardless of what the town council's opinion is. Is it, I mean, it strikes me that this type of this type of continuation where it's, it's providing more residential use. It's sort of almost going down and not up, right? I mean, it's, it's, it's a lot. It's basically allowing almost something that is allowed in the business zone, at least when it's being used in combination with, you know, commercial use um in that area. Um, so it strikes me that that may be something that's worth discussing in the bylaw um review that we are doing as far as changing that. So I'm wondering if that ends up to be the case, and there is discussion about that, and that potentially gets changed. Is that something that would change the way that you're pursuing this, right? I mean, use this option that has less units regardless, or whether that's something that changes in and gets approved by town meeting. Um, would you continue the old?
Pretty much. Um, I think they would love to do a four unit. It seems like it fit well, but they already had four units there. Um, so if there was a way forward with regard to that, and it was, you know, months in the future, you probably would certainly look at that.
Um, okay. Yeah, just to know what, where, where it's.
I don't think, just to clarify, I don't think oftentimes with the business restricted zone specifically, you know, like a list three options where, you know, you get on maybe airs versus, you know, the office housing. That's not as viable as you would like to think. Some areas I think are, but for something like this, this is kind of frontiers bill for a business. We think that this makes sense to keep it kind of residential.
Oh, no, and not to say that we would be mixed use, but the idea is that residential is allowed in, in
Right.
Certain, certain circumstances in the business, in the B R zone, right? So I mean, it's sort of, it's already sort of an accepted use if it meets certain qualifications, but it also seems to be a need, and to go down to residential in business seems like it could be a viable option to put into a bylaw, but we, it's, it's for discussion. I just wanted to see where you, your head was at. Um, and so also, so you know in your client notes that that may be part of a discussion.
That's, that's great. Um, so he's, he's tracking what's going on, definitely has been, um, you know, we're looking for the right way forward.
Yep. Okay.
So when I get back and it sounds like I'll have, you know, feedback. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Appreciate your time.
Uh, so any um more discussion on that?
We'll have that later on tonight.
At least on this, what, what has been talked about due to that? Is there anything that anybody wants to raise?
I hate to see it drop back down to two when it's needed so much. But it's still a path forward for him.
Okay. All right, any town officials have any questions or comments? Yeah, no, no, that's all right, any um public questions or comments on this uh application? It is two fifty. Any other public questions, comments? No, okay. Um, and just for the folks online, um, since there's a bunch of folks, if um you can try to use, if you do have a question or comment during the course of one of these hearings, if you can just use the raise hand function, um, if you have any issues with that, just kind of speak up and we'll, we'll take you in turn. Um, all right. So with that, why don't we um continue this on to the next meeting? Um, do I hear a motion to continue College Highway to seven fifteen on uh March twelfth?
Dave's penis, so move.
Richard, I'll sing a second.
Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Dave's been aye.
Dick out singer, aye.
Even Sutton, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
Okay. That is all stuffs. Seven twenty public hearing. Then they begin the session of the Southwood twenty forty master plan final draft, consider all events again. Um, and you have an update to report back. Nishakomiya Mia uh is continuing to work through the notes uh uh and inserting them in an order of appearance. Everything seems to make sense. Uh, the time consuming component is the formatting of the document.
Okay.
Um, as he shared with us, um he says, looks like he'll have the, the final, final version um by the twelve. He also mentioned that they have started to go through the zoning uh for the diagnostic report. Um, but he'll be coordinating with me uh as to when, you know, we'll engage to bring information for the planning board.
Okay.
All right, so the um makes sense to continue out to the next one?
Yeah.
Okay. Right here, motion to continue um the discussion on master plan to seven twenty. Um, uh, well, actually, you know what? Let me um let me, uh, let's put it on a seven twenty, continue it to seven twenty on March twelfth. Do I hear a motion?
Dave's been a so moved.
I'll sing a second.
Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Dave's been aye.
Dick out singer, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
Okay. If we have a minutes.
We also have a couple of other business items, routine business elements to review, including the uh planning board report.
Oh, yeah, why don't we do that since that is the main point, so.
The lady everyone has a copy. It's a sort of kind of a pair of new edits. And although I broke down the number of years and hopes of folks and as a planning board member, I keep this real, this paper away. So I will have that inserted for the submitted work.
That's what was right there.
Yeah. These have been on the board.
One of them in spot.
No, it is.
My answer was too many.
And six. Seven.
You're on seven?
Yeah. I do your turn and then find your turn.
That's, good job, everybody. Alright. All right, and I, um, board members, anything to add to the chairs?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good to me.
Okay.
I, I saw these, it was really important. Alright, any? Any else now? Alright, um I'm not sure if we need a motion, but one. Can't really get along with the motion. Do I hear a motion to um submit the uh planning board report for twenty twenty-three as drafted?
Dave's been a so moved.
Dick out singer, second.
Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Dave's been aye.
Dick out singer, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
All right. Seven thirty. Seven seventy-one College Highway. Proposed retail developments, special permanent site plan review and stormwater management permit application. You have this note? Thank you. Thank you. Sure. Okay. Notice public hearing. Uh notice is hereby given versions of map general laws, chapter forty eight, section eleven, in the town of Southwood bylaws of the planning board, a whole of hybrid public hearing on Tuesday, February twenty seven, twenty twenty-four at seven thirty P M via Zoom in an alien news hearing room at four fifty-four College Highway, Southwood, Mass. On an application by Toledo Development Group LLC care of Mr. Gary Ucalito for a special permit, site plan approval, and stormwater management permit for property located at seven seventy-one College Highway in the business whose property is shown on current asbestos map twenty-seven, parcel four. The applicant proposes to construct Ucal development in accordance with the code of the zoning bylaw, chapter one eighty-three and chapter one eighty-five, sections nine, ten, seventeen, and thirty. Zoom information is provided. A copy of the application plans may be inspected by contacting the town planner, John Goddard, at his phone or email. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the matter should appear at and manage designated by the government and software's calling for it. Okay, Mr. Lebeck.
Thank you, sir. Again, for the record, Rob Lebeck, tomorrow Lebeck Associates, um, we we're here uh this evening, President Gary Ucalito. Um, they are the developer for a proposed ten thousand six hundred and forty square the property is located on the west side of College Highway. My plan is oriented north. This is north this way. College Highway is at the bottom of my plan. We're proposing a pretty straightforward layout. This layout is based on the sort of typical layout for this store. It is a it's a dollar store. So we, you know, it's pretty straightforward. We have a curve cut off of College Highway. We meet or exceed all of the dimensional requirements in the zoning district. Um, we have designed a stormwater basin that surface flow, kind of an open drainage system, which the drainage runs to the south and then into a stormwater basin, seven four bay. There, it's pretty, it's really pretty straightforward. You know, there's some questions, there are some butters. We have screened and planned to screen the, the butters in the surrounding area. We have a perimeter uh plantings around the edge. Worth some comments that we have responded to tonight. Happy to um go through that response with you. We anticipate that we would request the continuance after tonight's hearing, taking the input. Um, and then we'll be back ideally in two weeks, or when the next schedule is to have addressed fire department comments and some of the other minor comments that we have. We had about ten comments total. If it pleases the chair, will I do is go through the comments briefly?
Sure.
Um, the first comment, I'll paraphrase, the first comment was related to the architectural elevations. I do have notes this evening. Um, they show the general building. You know, the facades of all, all four sides, as well as the design of the planning using, but there's, there's brick and hard plank siding. And behind you, if anybody can't see my plan down here, some glazing on the front, pretty straightforward building. This is Westfield on South Hampton.
Rob, just so that we have a clear record, these ones that you're talking about now are comments from John Goddard.
I apologize, yes, first, first set will be the comments from Mr. Goddard.
Yep.
So item number one was the elevations, so those over there, we'd happy to answer the questions, you know, going forward. We also had a question regarding. Mechanical equipment was located or is located on the north side of the site, so we could certainly look at maybe moving that, you know, that. There was residential about our next door, so and to the, to the rear. I'm sorry, I'll speak up. So the next one, the question was about mechanical units outside of the building, would there be, you know, HVAC units, et cetera? There was a couple of spots for those chillers on the outside on the north side, so if that's not seen as an ideal location, that can be adjusted. They certainly screen it, double screen it, there's some fencing around it, there's things we can do. One, to minimize any sort of noise, and two, to screen what's there, so. That was number two. Number three was kind of just the overall orientation, I think, you know, probably allowing the planning board members have been through the past. Projects on College Highway that we've done, generally speaking, retailers want parking up front, they want easy access to the building with handicap accessible parking. Right near the building, they want visibility towards the street, we've designed this to meet all of the requirements of the zoning district. But also based on their prototypical layouts, they have very specific movements for loading. Another question we believe is the next item, loading will be at the back southwest corner of the building. They'll, they'll load. Standards, all of their loading is typically there, there'll be. Compactors and dumpster locations here, so that's on the south side of the building. That answers number four. Number five. I think there was, it was a comment related to parking and screening. The parking will be oriented so that the lights from the cars, not to say that they won't come in this way, but. It will generally be facing towards the building or towards the street, but we can certainly extend this, we looked at. You know, we can enhance and can extend any buffers that we have, not a problem, they understand that the neighbors might have questions or concerns with regard to that. The number six. Right here is where we plan on having final sign as, as questioned by your planner. That's why we're omitting the tree, but yes, we will, in the updated set will show a location of the final sign. Number seven. It's related to the fire department comments, which I'll go through next. So there was a question related to test pits, there's a DBB requirement that you have test pits. To determine to see my groundwater as well in term of the ability of the soils. We have a couple of test pits back here, I believe we need one or two more, we'll supplement that before the next meeting. Not usually so quiet. I'm not singing karaoke though.
Well, I gotta get to work first.
You don't want to sing. Want to start off? So I was just going through the letter, for those of you that couldn't hear, there was a number of kind of housekeeping items, questions from the department. In addition to that, there were questions from VPW. VPW questions, the first question was related to test pits, we're going to furnish additional test pits for the. Mr. Brown has that information in, in his review, which is completely understandable. Number two. Is related to the prototypical layout of a building, there's. Questions about deliveries and adequate turning movements. We believe it's more than adequate, we can show them the truck turning movements, so we can work that out with. The engineering department, and you know, if there's any adjustments that need to be made, we certainly have ample room throughout the site to. Do so. This third question was related to water service, there is a domestic service, we anticipate a one-inch domestic service and a six-inch fire suppression service. To the building, the building is over seventy-five hundred square feet, so requires to be, required to be sprinkler. A trench permit, not a problem, that's just the housekeeping item that noted by VPW. Number five is mass DOT, so we are on a mass DOT roadway, so they have the jurisdiction over the road here, you will. Submit what's called an access permit. And they will review that, they have a process at District Two in North Hampton, pretty straightforward process, but we certainly will be going through that. I have a number of comments from the fire department. Some of them, first of all, all of them, we plan on addressing, the fire department is here, it's great. But generally, we plan on meeting them and then separately, kind of go through each of these items, putting their apparatus, how the best way to adjust the site plan as necessary. So all of my responses to all of they, and I apologize, I appreciate you being here tonight, but the, the response is essentially. We're going to meet their requirements and make sure that, you know, we can get to the building safely, we need to get around other side of the building, look at how to do that properly. To address life safety, so not a problem, we totally understand that, so that's, those were items, all the fire department items. If you'd like, I can read those specifically or.
Yeah, I, I can read through them since they're coming from us or from the town, so. I can read them after, if you want to keep going with anything, it's up to you, you're done, we can read them in now.
I'm done, I can read them in now or I can?
Yeah, no, I can read them now, so fire chief. Had four comments, I believe. And as Mr. Lex said, they'll be addressed before the next meeting. First, the parking lot with oil would not allow for fire apparatus to maneuver for strategic position and puts any apparatus very close to the building. Secondly, the parking spaces as currently assigned would restrict access to any fire department connection used to supplement. The required fire sprinkler system, current regulation lists the maximum distance of travel. Or hose lay to supply the FDC be no greater than a hundred fifty feet. This current configuration has us close to that a hundred fifty feet if supplied from an engine parked in the street. Third, access to all four sides of the building is limited and will be more challenging than winter with snow loads slash piles. And fourth, the turning radius on the south side of the driveway entrance is only our twenty feet, the same is true when. Turning north into the parking lot at greater radius would be preferred.
I think they meant that, I don't know if you meant the north side or the south side, but this radius here is fifty feet. It's twenty in the north, I don't know, maybe that, maybe it's this.
Yeah, and I'm looking from, yeah, so I. So. But generally, that's the comments and, you know, they'll be addressed and we'll take the fire departments input at the next meeting.
As will we.
Yep, okay. Alright. Anything from the board? As an initial matter.
I'm just trying to. Get a sense of where this lot is relative to, kind of like, I'm looking at Google Maps here. To the north, right, there's a residential development. And it looks like there's a tree line. That kind of separates this property from that, is that? On the residential property, do you know, or is that? On your property or this property?
Sure, I can try that. I think you do have a tree line. At least go sit in other type of pocket.
There's been so much activity out there, I know. They'd rather look at who's worse.
Yeah.
Tap into a spy satellite. How about the town's G S map?
Okay.
So this is the subject property.
Yep.
Their flag lot is part of the. Green, southwest.
Green west.
Green west. Which is this side. This is where Dr. Walls recently permitted his, his projects. This is Windfield, right here. So this.
Yep, okay, yeah, yeah, and the tree line I was referring to, it looks like it's. Kind of straddles the line there.
Yeah, yeah, there's no, there's no intent to impact that, and we're just looking to stop.
To add to it.
And we can, you know, we could move down here, as you can see, I'm pretty good amount of wiggle room on this one.
And then what does the exterior lighting scheme looks like?
It'd be difficult for you folks to read. On this plan, we have an overlay of the site plan, and we have our lighting locations. We have some wall packs, those are labeled WP. And then we have site lighting, we have one, two, three, four, five, I'm sorry, one, two, three, four, five. Site lights, and then the rest are wall packs, so focused on the east side, on the south side, and then. The wall packs are dark sky, I'm sorry, the, the site lighting is dark sky compliant, downlit, shoebox style. Lighting with LEDs.
Would that lighting be on all night long or?
I think hours of operation would be logical, and I think it would be logical to go down to some sort of security lighting minimal, so you could have cameras. Operation. But I don't see that that would be an issue at all. And really, our spillover ends. Right at the parking lot, so there's, you know, we have ample room before the property line, and again, we can look at very specific views for. Screening levers.
Any other board? Questions, comments? Dick or Jessica online, anything?
I was just, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I was curious as to how this design, I heard Rob mention that it is. Kind of matches the Dollar General or Dollar Tree versions that are already out there, what changes? Are you proposing to make it match our bylaws where we request that it? Fit in with the town. And its site. And look. Is there any? Potential for that sort of change to make it look more appropriate for the town?
I think the fair answer is it would be a drastic change from the prototypical design that's provided, to the extent that. You know. A lot of the other, you know, for example, a lot of these other. Retailers that you have in town potentially done the same thing, you know, the Riley Auto Parts has parking in front.
But we want to do better, Rob. Sorry to interrupt.
Those want to do better. However, retailers don't necessarily want to do better. We've designed, I think in the last twenty-five years of doing this, I designed one retail center in, in Agawam. That has the parking behind it, it's got the Dunkin' Donuts at the corner. So it's very rare that they will accept that option, it's completely. Reverse of how their business works, they have the front door location towards the street, they have the parking towards the street. I don't know that I've seen one done that way, so I totally understand, you know, trying to do better, but this is a very specific use. And a very specific prototype. So. I don't see, you know, I don't see that there's a lot of wiggle room to put. The parking behind the building and, and satisfying sort of retailer. This one or any others.
Anything else, Jessica?
No, not this time.
Alright, any? Town officials have any comments? Yeah.
I may make a comment.
Are, are you a town official or? Are you a town official?
No.
Okay, so that's okay, that's okay, just give me one minute and I just wanted to look to make sure there wasn't any online, and then we're going to go right into the public comments. Yep, no problem. Okay. Alright, any public comments?
My name is Pat, Pat Rashna of Montana, and I live at twenty-seventh Windfield Circle. And I've been in real estate almost forty years. And my concern is over to the south side, we have five hundred thousand dollar homes. And to the north, we have Windfield, which. You're looking at approximately around four hundred thousand. I grew up across the street and I'm a real South Wiccan, but. I feel that this dollar store, and this would be the third one in South Wick. I understand the other one may be closing, I heard that today. So I don't think our town needs another dollar store. I understand it's VR with a permit, he may definitely go forward, but I would like to have the planning board consider this. On, to the right, on the north side, there are. Several patios. That is going to obstruct them with the lights coming in, the traffic. And just the whole. Dollar store concept being put on this beautiful lot. I think that people that Windfield would rather see something. Maybe a little restaurant, a little. Type restaurant or something more conducive. To that beautiful lot, other than a dollar store.
Thank you, any other public comments?
So does this dollar store own the dollar store of the world that's going out of business? Same parent company?
No, really, I, no.
No, so Dollar General and Family Dollar are not related.
And I haven't heard that Family Dollar is going out of business, but I don't.
Well, their employees said that today, because I went to walk in to see what it looked like, I had never been in there. Second of all, that'll be our fourth dollar store or similar stores, so you have, we have this one, we have the Family Dollar, you know, Dollar Tree, and then we have the Ocean State. So between those four buildings, I don't know what other knickknack or trinket you can possibly want in town, that your needs aren't going to be met with the other three that are already. Four, they're right, they've got four hundred thousand dollar homes to the right of it, you have cash house across the street, you got the senior development across the street. The Dollar General smack having the middle of the property just doesn't really go with, like Mrs. Thor instead of there, the. The theme or the, the flow of what Southwick is. And the Greenswood. So, just, just a thought, this is a public thought, you know, going forward, like I said, I've been in the Family Dollar and. I thought you two were semi somehow related.
No, they are not. The current proposal is really a convenience style retailer. Which would be between a number of residential. Housing communities and frankly. Now they feel that there's definitely a need, they're expanding in the area, they're expanding specifically in, in Southwick, in other areas. They do offer a wide array of convenience style retail products. I'm not the demographics guy, I'm not the, you know, I'm not the dollar guy. I'm literally the site plan guy, it fits really easily, it's pretty straightforward to do, it's on a mass DOT right of way. All of the dimensional requirements can be met, all of the zoning requirements, all the other zoning requirements can be met. It's hard to tell someone they can't, for me even, to tell someone you can't do it, if it's. You know, if it's that easy to fit and it makes sense and they want to be there. So that's kind of where we're at, so I understand, so I understand the comments about not wanting more dollar stores, I've heard the same thing about the Dunkin' Donuts, I've gone. And it seems like people just keep going, but. You know, so I get it, I get it, and I understand it's in your backyard, I can definitely say that we're sensitive to both. Residential communities, my company had done Windfield when it, when it happened early on, different GLV, my predecessor. And we've done the gardens. And we've done the gardens, the greens, so when they wanted to develop residential there. And they wanted to do, um, business here, they're hiring us, we're, we're following the rules. We're making sure that, you know, we're trying to be disarming and work with you folks, but they want to do it, that's kind of where we're at.
All right, any other public comments?
According to Tassel, uh, thirty-eight Windfield Circle, and we, uh, condominiums. I'm not too happy about it either, but, uh, if it has to go through, I have a few concerns here I'd like to mention and a question. Um, the, uh, the lighting is a concern of mine in terms of how it's set up in the, you know, parking lot. And also car lights, uh, in the parking lot there with investment, you know, be directed towards, you know, the condominium influence here. The traffic congestion, um, out there, the, uh, I, I think, uh, do I understand directly, this forty-two parking spaces, is that correct?
Uh, it sounds about right. Forty, uh.
Approximately?
Yeah.
Any noise that might, you know, come out of it in relation to that, and I wanted to, I might have to mention, excuse me, I wanted to mention something here. From, uh, near, uh, uh, one eighty-five dash seventeen here, uh, I'd like to just read a part, part of a, uh, paragraph here, it says, where a property in a business restricted zone abuts a property in the residence zone on the side or near a, or near the rear, a dense planting at least thirty feet in width shall be provided. The planning board may require more extensive plantings or opaque fencing if unusual conditions demand more screening or noise abatement. And I'd like you to consider that too, if this does go through there, so. And I, if you, if you could verify this statement that I just read, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I can verify that. Thank you.
Okay.
And we are hap- through the chair, we're, we're happy to address the screening as mentioned, we understand this is the folks back there, it's, so.
Okay. Um, any other, um, and just, uh, just so the folks online know, I tend to go to the folks in person here first and then I'll certainly hop online, so just please be patient, we'll get to everyone. Uh, I saw your hand at the end there.
Yes. Um, true being cheerful and seven, so. Um, the picture you pulled up, John Sheldon lot, dense tree. It's my understanding that all of those trees have been removed. So that was an older picture. So there are not as many trees between this property and page Joe Amlin got a house directly above my head. This part is green. There's really, from what I recall, there is nothing, except for, this from this, except for, oh. So, and I, I think what this gentleman just read is really important. Clearing the tree buffer and things that shield the work. The last thing we want to do is devalued.
Thank you. Um, any other public comments here, and, yes ma'am?
So it's a J R eight, seventeen Windfield Circle. I'm representing the board at Windfields, and one of my questions is about deliveries. Um, during what hours would truck and trailer trucks be driving in and out? To make deliveries to your Dollar General?
Generally, normal business hours, I can give you specifics of the delivery schedules, I don't have that, I can get that for you.
Three, ten units at Windfields, that would be directly affected by this on the northern side. I couldn't hear all of your plans about parking, what did you give on the northern side?
There's no parking on the northern side and there's no deliveries, everything's either on the east or the south side. So east being towards the street, south being on the far side from Windfields. So, um, so I think that's a good thing, but I'll certainly make sure that, um, we get you the delivery schedules, I think they have some control over that. Um, but general business hours.
Right, and then reflecting back to the, um, lighting, those particular first ten units there would also be directly affected by lighting of any sort. And I know you have rubber slated that's showing horizontally across, so how many?
The planning board can help us dictate, or they can dictate, um, the size of the vegetation that gets installed in a location.
Because these people are the
Yeah, the good, the good news is, and I, I apologize, I realize my plan is not, not easy for you to see. A lot of these sites that we normally develop are a lot tighter than this, we have a lot of them, the good news is the building is not right up against the property line. Opportunity to screen and do that the right way, we can look at some sort of stockade, you know, some impenetrable fence of some sort to help not only with noise, but also help with visibility, um, should there be lights, you know, filtering through vegetation, obviously, we know vegetation isn't perfect. But two can, can be done pretty well. Um, again, if you can see my site plan, the, the loading area is at the southwest corner of the building, so it would be completely opposite. You know, that should minimize any sort of noise or anything like that. Um, the, the dumpster area and some of the compactor area, you know, some of that could be screened additionally as well if there was a noise concern, but as far as lighting goes, it's, it's called dark stacking plant, it, it's pretty sophisticated in that it's downlit, straight downlit, and it's, um, LEDs, it'll, it'll know it's that direct the, the light very specifically, we have book candles that have been generated in the photo metric plan. Um, and then they, the planning will require it in household, so that if for some reason it's not doing what it says, if it's doing on plan with a photometer, um, it can be addressed, so if there was ever any spookable you can see up in the woods sometimes too. So we want to make sure that we're, we're, we do want to make sure that we're buffering these books properly. Um, I'm, I'm live right around here, um, I can certainly be available if there's specific views that I'm concerned with, where you have thin vegetation, that type of thing. If you happen to do a site visit, I can hear your name, we can try to look at where, you know, strategically located things. Obviously, we want an impenetrable visual buffer. But in addition, if there's key, we just are concerned.
Thank you.
Uh, any other public comments? Daniel?
Daniel, five twenty-first road, um, question for the board here. Other than a saturation of dollar stores in town, the ones that we have do not have their goods out on the sidewalk into their parking lot, this particular store brand is notorious for that, can we control that?
Yes, I believe so, I'm trying to think of the exact language, but I don't see, um, I think that it's possible, um, I'd have to, you know, I'll see the language when I'm saying it, um, but I think that, in my head, I think that's right. So, uh, through the chair, I believe you can, um, special permit, let's give you why I allowed to do. Yeah. Um, all right, any, uh, other public comments, Marcus?
Marcus Phelps, twenty-eight Eco Street. First item, uh, the parking. Are you meeting our standard? Right off, right, you're, the forty was whatever these parking spots.
Uh, we can, I think we are, um.
Because my thinking is you may not need that many parking spaces, and the planning board's ability to reduce that requirement. And to me, I know that, that we have good design guidelines and we've never used them to try to create parking other than in the front of the buildings. So I'm thinking some way to minimize the parking in the front of the building if possible. And still meet what the planning board expects in the special permit for parking requirement.
I know that the retail, through the chair, I know that the retailer has, um, a specific need, I'll confirm that. I believe what we're showing on the plan is the minimum required by the zoning regulations, but, but there might be a delta between the two that we can check.
Yeah, and we also have some way to reduce down even from the minimum, so.
Yeah, I think it'd be good if it minimized parking. Uh, and still meet whatever the requirements are. Uh, second area is this is a pretty good sized lot, and I see a lot of green area in the back. And on the plan that I looked at in the planning board office, it said lawn. And in my mind, I think it would be better if it was something other than lawn, which is kind of an ecological desert. If you could do a meadow or something that maybe doesn't require a lot of maintenance, but yet it is still aesthetic. And it has a function. And.
I think it's actually, that's actually a great comment to be truthful. I'm kind of wondering why we wouldn't rotate our, if we can, grade wise, rotate our basin and just allow, you know, as part of the condition of the permit, allow everything to regrow. I knew, I, the, the lady's point, it's pretty barren out there now, I know that, I believe Mr. DePalma cleared it at one point, I know, uh, Mr. Hamlin did a house out there and through the, you know, there's been a lot of work, like a lot of disturbance out there, so.
I don't know if I would let it just regrow on its own, I would try to be proact- proactive and have some kind of a Yeah. planting scheme, maybe, uh, you know, brush hog it every three, four years or something. And to recycle. Uh, fencing, on the plan I looked at, there was quite a bit of fencing on the north side and the west side. Is that still there?
Yes, sir, uh, we have, well, we're showing a six foot stockade fence completely along the west side and completely along the um, we might, as long as it's not a site distance issue, probably bring that a little bit farther forward than we're showing, it'd be logical.
I'm just wondering if you really need all that installation.
Well, I'm thinking that you folks would like it, but.
Well, on the north side, yes. Across the west, if you've got vegetation, keep it more natural, but I know there's a residence down, uh, in the back there, a single family, so probably go with whatever input that person has.
I believe he's the builder of the greens, so I can, for the framers, I can.
And the final one is is trying to make this place fit into the town architecturally, if you uncover your design. Uh, I think we had it. It's similar to what is in Feeding Hills, uh, which I go by quite a bit. I'm thinking to fit into the town, is that a slope route at all?
It is.
In the front?
Uh, it slopes towards the back, I believe. So the front, so if you look at the cross section down below, um, front being that side, dropping subtle pitch to the.
So it doesn't, it, it doesn't slope towards College Highway. In other words, try to make it look colonial.
Uh, it does not currently slope towards College Highway.
So at a minimum, the color scheme, to me, it should be a light colored sign. Uh, I think the one in Feeding Hills is that type, fits in a little better with the, the area. So anyway, I know you can't accomplish what we'd like to have as far as our design guidelines, but at least look at it closely and planning board can certainly require, you know, those adjustments. Thank you.
I think those are fair comments, we'd love to accommodate as many as we can. We have a client that's very familiar. We expect that we'll be back with some out of the.
Uh, any other public comments here in the room?
I will laugh about waiting, I, and my question, I see what stock fence only on the backside and, um, that's the west side, north side, I mean. How come there's none coming down the east side?
Um, it's probably just because we were wondering whether that it was necessary, but, you know.
Well, that's my driveway that goes in there, I know there. And there's another building lot that's next to it, so if, I don't know what kind of trash is generated on the outside and.
So it's logical in your mind.
And, and the type of fence that you have there, the stockade?
Yep.
Is it a cheap one? Cause I know they last maybe five years or so.
I haven't specified, we haven't specified a specific fence, but we also, we can make sure that the age of the fence.
Or the vinyl fence or something like that, that doesn't fall apart.
This is, this is.
Oh, it said stockade.
Yeah, but.
I thought it was a wood one.
Uh, no, this is going to be vinyl stockade.
Okay, yeah. And, you know, the lighting, you addressed it, I had concerns about the lighting, but it's all down lighting, like you said, so I can't say too much, but the planting's in the back, if they could be higher.
Yep.
Be great for me, because that's exactly what I am going to be looking at.
Yeah, I, I understand completely, I, I drive by and see you back there.
Yeah.
Beautiful house, get away, yeah, yeah. Okay, so I have to do, uh, the rest of the thing as well.
Any other public comments here in person? Sure.
If I, if I have a question, I'm going to say, on the north side of the building there is out by the property.
Uh, I have a dimension to be careful, sixty, seventy.
Sixty-seven?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. All right, um, online, uh, I'm just gonna go in the order that's on my screen, so we have Robert Knowles. You want to unmute yourself?
Okay, uh, and it, in the past, and that, uh, my understanding was that that piece of property, and that was limited to like banks and doctors offices. And that, was it changed?
I, I think, I think it's always been in there as long as I remember.
So I believe the, um, the, the question that you're asking is, is, and the, the statement is fairly accurate in that if you're thinking about a permitted use, I believe in the business restricted zone, which encompasses almost all of College Highway up and down.
Fair enough.
Um, the permitted uses, I believe, include I don't think it was a doctor's office, but I think it's a bank and a library or a church.
Binary. Binary.
Binary, yeah, so all of the uses that would be normal business uses are by strict plan, and that means it didn't work.
That would not include retail?
Yes.
No, yeah.
So why are we locating at this?
It would include, it does include retail. Okay, uh, next hand, I see, uh, Marissa, the Barbara.
Hi, uh, Marissa Cook Obergon, one twenty-six South Loomis Street, good evening, everybody. Um, yeah, Mr. Levek, as you know, uh, you gave us sage advice back in July twenty twenty-one, we went ahead and created a master plan. So thank you for that, and I'm going to reference that actually in my comment really briefly. Um, I know that the master plan is still something that is getting reviewed by the planning board. But, um, I'm going to talk about the economic development chapter and just one of the strategies that we have on there. And ultimately, um, the overarching goal for Southwick, according to this chapter, is to have a strong locally propelled economy that includes and actively encourages a variety of businesses which fortify the tax base and provide well-paying jobs, as well as offer more goods and services to residents while also attracting visitors into town. Also within this statement is a vision for the town's economy that upholds the betterment of the town as a whole and balances sustainable economic growth with our rural New England character and other Southwick assets such as our natural resources, and some of the comments that I've heard there this evening, um, I can tell other people are concerned about that, and I think the suggestion of the meadow in terms of making use of that space and making it ecologically viable and balancing that out, that's great. But ultimately, I'm getting back to the economics of it, and someone mentioned that maybe one of the other dollar stores is closing. But at the end of the day, right now, as it stands, this would mark within a two mile, um, stretch in the main thoroughfare of our town, Route two oh two. Three dollar stores, and I didn't even think about Ocean State further down the line, I'm not sure if that necessarily classifies, but I get what the person was saying by including that in terms of type of retailer. Um, I'm just hoping that the planning board, even though the master plan is not approved at this point, that they take into consideration that the planning board That they take into consideration that the planning board acts for all intents and purposes as a firewall. Um, for the town of Southwick, and I say this in a positive way to filter through. Um, you know, possibilities and plausibilities for the town that could help us stay where we are now. Will take this forward into the future in this vision that, um, the residents of Southwick have helped develop. So I don't know that a third dollar store or even another one of those dollar stores closes. If two dollar stores within the town of Southwick is necessary, and if that ticks the boxes in terms of being a diverse business. Being a business that provides goods and services to the, uh, residents of Southwick, if it attracts visitors into our town. And if it, um, upholds the betterment of the town in any way. And I would be dismayed if this were to go through without any sort of conditions or requirements. See the retailer develop this space in a way that aligns with the design guidelines. Um, if we can't do that, then why do we have the design guidelines? I really hope that, um, the planning board will take into account the master plan as they, um, consider. This plan and its future iterations. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Marissa. Um, Mr. McFlanell, did I see your hand before or no?
Yeah, you did, but, uh, all my questions were answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any other public comments either in person or online?
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I do have one that was submitted by Nina.
Yep.
Uh, I'll read it to, uh, the easiest. I'm reading off from Leslie Danish. Dear Mr. Goddard, as I'm unable to attend this evening's meeting, I'm ready to voice my concerns regarding proposed development on Route two oh two about in Winfield condominiums. I moved to Southwick from Westfield just over a year ago, and I've come to appreciate the rural small, small town feel of my new home. I feel that adding yet another dollar store to our town will adversely change the complexion of a lovely, friendly community. I am concerned that a town this size would have three dollar stores within two miles of one level. As a resident of Winfield, I am also worried about the lack of privacy between our patios slash sunrooms and this proposed building. I respectfully request that the, uh, board consider. Uh, excuse me, the board carefully consider these issues before proceeding further. Thank you for consideration, Leslie A. Danish, thirteen Winfield Circle, Southwick.
Okay. Um, any other? Board comments before we. Continue this on, um. I mean, I guess. Uh, you know, I didn't comment before, I think I just wanted, would say. You know, when I look at this. Putting aside the design and putting aside the. Uh, you know, anything that we do to sort of change that, it strikes me that. Um. I mean, I feel like the bigger stores have crept down a little bit down on the College Highway towards Westfield, um. Uh, but you know, to be fair, there was the, the old car dealership, now the DPW and post office and stuff there too. But past. Say, um, you know, the brewery or, you know, past Sunnyside, uh, fork. It strikes me, it's, it's a different character than having. Larger stores of this size. It just, it, it, and I get that there's some BR there, but it just strikes me as a different character. Than this, um, and so I have a hard time trying to reconcile the two things. And especially reconcile sort of. Not, certainly not applying the design guidelines in that area. Versus, you know, farther down where I think you may have a little more leeway to, to. Not be as strict with them, but I, I, I'm still having trouble and maybe at the next meeting. You know, it'll, it'll be clearer to me, but I'm still having trouble trying to reconcile this size of a building and this type of building. In that location with what's there. It just doesn't, it doesn't seem to.
Philosophically?
Uh, just character wise, just the sort of character of driving through, you know, everything is. Even the businesses that are down there, reasonably small businesses. Um, and, and then you get to. You know. Farther up College Highway, you get into bigger businesses, bigger sized buildings, that type of thing, um.
American Inn's pretty big.
It's big. There's no question it's big, but it's not a. Retail business or not a service business. I mean, you know what I mean? It's, it's, it, it feels different than.
Standpoint, I mean, it's a convenience style retailer. It's ten thousand square feet. There's ample room on the lot. Um. You know, it's zoned for, you know, that whole corridor is, um, I mean, it is tended to. I'm talking about putting this on Lewis Road.
No, but it's not, it's not zoned. I mean, the properties next to it are not zoned for it. You couldn't put it on either of the properties.
Well, those are spots. Um, and they were, they were, so we, so if you look back at the zoning, because we did a lot of it, right? So R twenty A was a spot zone. For the Winfield condominiums. It was always business restricted in the front.
It's so. So that whole, once you get past Sunnyside. That whole thing is zoned a little bit funky. I mean.
Doctor's office, the dentist's office, that's business restricted all the way back.
That's not fully business or, I.
It, it, Jerry Drive, going back to Rosewood Estates is. It's all business restricted, all the way to the timeline. And there's, I mean, I, I get there's a myriad of uses, but this is an allowed use in the zoning district. We're happy to look at the. You know, the scale and the nature of the building. I get that. I think that makes a lot of sense. But from a zoning standpoint, to say that there's a paradigm shift north of, um. Sunny Side Road doesn't make sense.
Well, in the, in the sort of. Kind of think of the right word. I mean, it's, it's. In those businesses from the Westfield line up, I mean, you're talking about. I'm trying to think of what's still there. I mean, it's, you know, you had the, uh. The, the, the cheese shop you had. You have, I don't know.
Web City Tool and Die.
You have.
The American Inn, which is probably forty thousand square foot building.
But that's not a, I mean, that's not, it's essentially residence.
I mean, the Web City Tool and Die has been there for how long? And that's probably a thirty thousand square foot building. It's brick with multi, you know, I mean, it's. So the character of what you're talking about is not a specific character. You're looking at one specific, there's five different uses in a row. You have Paul's Island Old House, right? You, you got, I mean, it's just, it's, we can drive it sometime. We can take a look. It's not just one rural character.
Yeah, and maybe I gotta, you know, just spend more time with it. I, that's, that's where, sitting here tonight, that's when it's come to mind, is it doesn't seem to fit over there. Um, but. I'm happy to think more about that, but that's my, that's my initial reaction to it. Um, all right, anything else from the board before we continue this on?
So I'm just curious, Mr. Levek's statement was that. It's not currently rural, but that is indeed what our master plan is looking for us to do. So what do, what answer do you have to that? That this does not meet. The desired goals of our master plan or our design guidelines.
I can answer that.
Please.
You're asking me the question? If you want agricultural uses all along College Highway, then you should rezone all that. And then.
Rural does not equal agriculture though. Agriculture is one thing, having a rural. Uh, characteristic and having it fit into the, to the view of the town and what we want to see. And what we're telling you as the developers, that we don't want to see another plain Jane. Box store placed down in a spot where something, uh, could be put in a, and you know me, Rob, I know what the process is here. You can't just make an applicant come forward with a design project. Um, but we're asking that this at least attempt to meet with what we're looking for in our master plan. And our design guidelines.
Love that.
And to help us keep Route ten two oh two a rural characteristic looking, if and not in fact actuality.
Well, I think the problem is that you have this beautiful rural character and I agree, you know, it's nice when, you know, guys like John Wall, who's a friend and a client. Come in and they sweep in and they protect these properties. But you have all these properties that are arguably developable, developable, have grid soils. And they have a very specific zoning district. There's very specific uses that are allowed in those zoning districts. So people come along and they want to service this corridor. This is a major corridor in the, in the town of Southwick. I'm not saying that it shouldn't have a rural character, but I, I personally would prevent. And I think it's very difficult for people to prevent, especially with a master plan effort. People from coming in and wanting to utilize the, the, um. The corridors that exist within the community. Fifty-seven, you know, people are looking at the Pioneer Dairy right now. There's a lot of stuff happening there. Um, that's gonna be the next question, you know, and so there's these corners. And these areas along these borough fairs that people want to service the, the community, the community, there's communities they're growing. And that, you know, they wanted, they want their product to be available. It's a convenience use in an area that hasn't done the graphics that they're looking for. I will certainly take all the comments back. I appreciate it. I understand what you're saying. I get it. Um, I have a certain amount of leeway in what I do. Um. You've seen the other stores like this. You can see what they've been able to do. Check and, check and see if there's one. In some rural community, certainly if you find something that's been done, we'll certainly try to work with them. Um. But what I can do is what I have. I have a product to put on the site and I can certainly work with the neighbors, work on landscaping. Work on pushing the building around, moving things, adjusting things, but it's still the same retailer, so. And people ask me, why isn't there, you know, why isn't Whole Foods coming to town? It's just the demographics, where these people want to be. Um, so that's it, so. So I will work hard, Jessica, to, um, do what I can do with the design and with the architected as well.
Uh, perhaps this is a good time to designate Diana's now the voting member since we're. Getting off the special permit.
Um.
Later.
No, well, everybody's here, so. Um.
Fair enough.
I think we can hold. Off. Uh, I, yeah. All right, um, all right, so why don't we continue this on, uh, Rob said next meeting is. Okay?
It's the next meeting.
The twelfth.
It might be a little more time. Normally I don't say that. Thinking, I want to be able to communicate with my clients.
I don't think I ever heard you say that twice. Um, so the twenty sixth.
That would be great.
Okay.
Recording is on, right?
Yeah. Do we? We have nothing scheduled. I'm just gonna keep it on at seven thirty. Um, so do I hear a motion to? Continue seven seventy-one College Highway through seven thirty on March twenty-sixth.
Dave Spina, so moved.
Okay, I'll take a second.
Your roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye?
Dave Spina, aye.
Dick Cut singer, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Jessica Thor, and I.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, seven forty in planning board time. Uh, public hearing on proposed amendments to chapter one eighty-five, section twenty-eight. Non-conforming structures and lots. The notice jumped. Yeah, take your time.
I think a reminder.
Thanks, you're welcome.
Okay. I'm just gonna ask everybody if you're, if you're. Gonna leave to move on out, so we have another hearing going on right now. So, notice of public hearing.
Mike, you want the mic?
No, it's all right. Well, let me just read this and then we'll, if we still have it, we'll deal with it. Uh, notice of public hearing. Tuesday, February twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four, seven forty P M. Notice is hereby given.
I don't fly that.
In accordance.
Excuse me.
Folks, folks, hey, folks.
Hello, we still have a meeting.
You guys gotta move it out.
Thank you.
Uh, notice hereby given in accordance with the provision of Mass General Laws, chapter forty-eight, section five. That the planning board will hold a hybrid public hearing on Tuesday, February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. At seven forty P M via Zoom and in the Laney's hearing room, Town Hall, four fifty-four College Highway. Southwick, Mass, to consider amending the code of the town of Southwick, chapter one eighty-five zoning, section twenty-eight. Non-conforming uses, structures and lots, including but not limited to the constraints noted therein to changing said non-conformities as detailed under one eighty-five. Twenty-eight A, one C, so that a broader range of opportunities may be available to applicants under this section. And allow the planning board to properly review matters on a case-by-case basis. Zoom information is given. Details regarding the proposed amendment may be reviewed by contacting the town planner, John Goddard, at his phone or email. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on this matter should appear at the time. Please designate as Michael Doherty, Chairperson, Southwick Planning Board. All right, uh, no, we can't close up, can't.
Ma'am, ma'am.
Can't close it. Appreciate it. Um, there. All right. Just wait for Mr..
Thank, I appreciate it.
Okay. So. Um.
I'm hearing this.
It probably makes sense to bring up. The Bible, I don't care what version, whether it's online. Do you have? Bring up that.
Stay away from the one with the hieroglyphics, so. Way old.
Um, all right. So, um. We had requested this public hearing to deal with what. Seems to be coming up a lot lately, which is. Um, non-conforming uses, trying to figure out how to. To function without the ability to. Expand it all beyond their footprints that they have on. Now, this is a bylaw that's been on the books for, um, quite a long time. Um, I don't think it's, it's been amended, parts of it have been amended, but it's generally been there, I think, since the beginning. Um, and it's sort of at least struck me that after some fifty years or so, when you have a. Quote-unquote non-conform use in a certain place. That obviously it has had some longevity. And to give that business a little bit of leeway, not full leeway, uh, cause they're obviously not in the right zone, but if they've established themselves for that long. Giving the board some discretion to allow them to do, um, you know, somewhat. Minor, uh, additions and function, um, as some other businesses in town do is the proper thing to do. Or at least worth discussion. Um, it's also, I think, raised earlier, but whether. You know, some discretion about, um. Sort of. Uh, promoting residential uses, you know, even when, um, um, they may otherwise be disqualified under the. The, the timeframe, uh, for continuation of non-conforming uses or otherwise, uh, may be worth factoring in. Um, so. I will, let's see.
Over a while, yeah.
Um.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, um, so I guess let me just, uh. Open it up to the board first, and, and John has brought up. Um, the current version of one eighty-five twenty-eight up here, so you guys can take a look. At least that's the beginning part of it. We can move on as we. Go through it, um, but. Um, board members. Thoughts on. This chapter and how to, if at all, we will end it.
I mean, it seems to me, just reading it, my sense, not that I was there when this was written. Is that it was trying to kind of. Obviously, limit the non-conforming uses, and then if anything, over time, make them all conforming by, you know, with the term, with the limits and, and the. The one year of, of, you know, continued use that if somebody broke, so to try to move everything over into a conforming use.
Yep.
Um, but obviously, as you're saying, over the course of a very long time. The reality is that these uses just continue. Um, and so therefore, and I get that, and so, okay. I think that's why we're here to say, to kind of acknowledge the fact that, yes, it seems that these uses are gonna basically continue, so how do we? Live with that and make it. Reasonable and while still maintaining some. Tech, I'll call it, of the zoning, right?
Right, and so, I mean, if you. I think what we saw. With the most recent one, right, with Crepes, um, is probably. Pushback on the idea of changing that to business restricted because. You can always have that particular business there, and then you've changed it to business restricted and you have lost at least some control over.
Right.
What goes there versus. Sort of. The fact that something, a use has been there or a particular business has been there for a while. Giving them some, a little bit of leeway to run their business and add on a little bit, right? It's not necessarily, it's still can, they may still go out of business and they may still. You know, change over to the use and, um.
Well, just in the last couple of we've had, it's been a time limit issue also. This day and age where prices the way they are, fewer and fewer buyers, that properties are gonna sit a little bit longer than they used to. And expanding a timeline on that would be a big help.
I think so, because I think that timeline was probably written in there. Really to try to force people to, oh, well, I've lost my window of opportunity, now I gotta become conforming.
Yeah, you know, give, give expansion rights on a case-by-case basis. You know, like, like, to, with the tea house, that's on the table there, they, they wanted to put a walk-in refrigerator on. Correct, you know, you look at them case-by-case, I mean, you're not gonna double the sides of the building with every single lot, but you make it so, bring it. Tell us what you're gonna do and we can make, make arrangements.
Right, and so, I mean, there's two parts of it, one is that footprint, right, and so how do you? I mean, the devil's in the details on, on the language that you give and the discretion you give, and then the other part of it is that one year. Nonconforming and do you change the actual year amount, or do you? Put in some. You know, some sort of, some like. Um, discretion for the board, right, to sort of extend that or to whatever, I mean, I don't, you know. You know. I'm not sure, it sounds like we may. Have ideas that we're somewhat in agreement on, it's just a question of. Getting it into.
Other than I'd say my general.
Three right there are the, the keys. Case by case, expansion case by case, timeline. What was the other one there? Yeah, definitely residential, well, that's something we've wanted to do very long, is to be able to add. Apartments to businesses on the second floor, things along, so combining those would be a good thing right off the bat.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, and you don't necessarily want to. Make it so that. The B R zone becomes. You know, you can build residences there, new, but. You know, I, I don't have necessarily a problem. Protecting the residences that are there and using them for residential uses. Um, or even expanding them for residential uses to sort of deal with the. Amount of residential. Uh, units that are real, right, and that seems to make sense.
In fact, it would be a perfect. Perfect scenario if we put, just like that on there.
Alright, other board, and.
You know, err on the side of providing guidance, but giving the board discretion. Craft some languages.
Board members online before I turn to Diane here.
Yeah, Mike, um, I agree with what we're trying to do. And I totally understand everybody's position, but my concern is. We need to be very cautious of how it affects abutting people, abutting, you know, businesses and or private residents. That our willingness to make some changes for, for a party or some location. Does it affect the homeowners or whomever is in this surrounding area?
Yeah, that's the. That's the, it doesn't mean you're not gonna hold a public hearing on it, and there has to be. You know, a, a vote in, and, and, you know, you take the input of the, of the abutters, I just think it's. It has to be. I, I just think there, there, it can't be as black and white and, and, you know, as it is now, it just seems like it's not all that. So. Alright. Any other board members?
I like that we are all looking at this with an open mind, I think it's important that we. Take a look at this and recognize that. What was good for zoning fifty years ago before some of us were even born isn't necessarily what's gonna be good for Southwick now and. And in the future, so I, I'm fully behind us taking a look at this and. Providing us with some flexibility and making sure that we can. Allow applications to go forward if they do in fact fit with our master plan.
Right, Jess, next time you use sixty-two, that's where I can stay under the mark.
Hey, what about me?
And if you have anything to.
Um, no, I do, I do think it makes sense to look at it case by case. And give you the discretion to make those decisions, because like somebody who just said that. Things change, right, so lots change and zonings have changed in the, you know, last year since all of this was written. And this is very precise. And I think you have to look at things case by case, I completely agree with that.
Town officials have any comments, questions, Mr. O'Glin?
Uh, I too take exception to Mrs. Thornton's character.
You all can age yourselves if you want, I was just using a very simple even number, folks.
And I a hundred percent agree with Mr. Ottinger, and. Looking at them. I was not on the board when this was passed, but you know, the legislative intent, intent behind this was. I think is an expectation that's set with pre-existing nonconforming on two fronts. So I agree that there should be room in an amended bylaw that gives the planning board. Via very public and transparent process, a little bit of wiggle room, but it really needs to be a little bit. And the reason is. Especially when you have businesses operating in what is now a developed residential zone. Those expectations are set. By the bylaw that an existing business is gonna be there, it's gonna be the size that it is, it's gonna continue to run. But it's not gonna grow big. The second thing is, is that if you, if you make the opening too big. You end up where you have situations where someone attempts. To put the proverbial fifty pounds of manure in a five-pound bag. Okay? And we've seen, you know, I've seen in my time on the planning board and on the select board where. Someone buys a property and they try to do too much with it. They, and. It, it's just not possible in the size they're in, and it creates tension between abutting properties, neighbors. Uh, residential, so on and so forth, and then we've seen it done correctly, and, and. If I can use the rail trail house as the picture-perfect example, right? Pre-existing nonconforming use in a zone in a tightly, what they call tightly settled residential zone over there. The previous owner wanted to glom on a kitchen for years. Everyone told him, no, residents, every time they came in front, even informally in front of the planning board, the residents came out in masks. There was a huge noise problem over there. The new owner bought that place. Or I think they bought out their previous partner or whatever, they came in and said, look, we, we wanna be a good neighbor, these are our customers. We think we can make a go of this. They chopped off a piece of the bar, they pulled the, the kitchen inside the footprint. They then also added a double door in the back onto their deck, which has completely changed outlook for the noise issue. I haven't heard much of a noise complaint from that area that we used to have all the time, now perhaps they still have some, so. But not anywhere near what they used to have, that's a prototypical. I think best case scenario under the existing bylaw of how it works. You know, and then I think if you, I, and I don't wanna pick on Crepe's Tea House, and this is kind of the impetus for this, but I, I think that. That. That one has a separate deal, but we've seen other places where someone bought a small operation and tried to do much more than the property can yield. And, and that, that can be problematic, so it, it's broadly peril, but I agree that there needs to be some. Latitude given to the board, but I, I thought in the board that you have to keep that. It, it should be very, very much de minimis as to what someone can expand a use. For pre-existing nonconforming zoning, and, and Mr. Spina is correct, I think the, the original thought was that. Eventually, a lot of these uses would die off, and then the new use that would come in would become conforming to zoning. Fact is, that'll never happen, and you go all around the Commonwealth and look at the case law that we've all seen over the years of. Pre-case law for pre-existing nonconforming, so, you know, some relaxation is proper, but you have to really keep up with the good neighbor policy that. This, your board has done a phenomenal job doing over the years, thank you.
I just wanna say you can't follow. Mr. Mowgli with anything, because you just said everything.
Just say dead elf.
Any other town officials? Alright, um, any public comments? Mr. Phelps.
I'm gonna put you back on the board.
Marcus Phelps, twenty-eight, Ego Street. So. I am pretty old, but I wasn't here when that bylaw. Uh, but I think. They were looking at all those residential lots around the lakes. That are nonconforming. And they came up with a way to protect the butters and so forth. And not to try to get too much out of those small lots, as Mr. Mowgli mentions. So. Here's your chance to correct something that's been a problem over the years. By establishing a lakeside overlay district. Which would be fairly easy to define. Basically, it's anything east of the rail trail as you come north through the town. And it's the lake. Properties. Put that into an overlay district and make the dimensions of those lots different. Than the dimension of lots in the R forty zone or whatever. And just allow. Those. Places to. Be able to develop. Or change somewhat. Within whatever dimensions the board decides to do, so that's a big step. And the planner has to think hard about it. Uh, and how, how you come up with those dimensions. But the opportunity is here now that you've opened the public hearing on this. To think about that. The other one is. As far as I can see. Uh, there's opportunity to look around at other communities. And I have, there's a copy or there's a bylaw in Fella, Mass. Uh, which is, uh, chapter one twenty-five dash seven. Uh, that is pre-existing nonconforming uses, structures and lots. So they have, you know, text in a bylaw that I think you could look at. And sort of compare to the existing text in our one eighty-five law. The other final thing is, you're, you're sort of looking at two uses. That may be nonconforming, the residential. I've already kind of addressed as far as a lakeside overlay area. And the one we've been hitting against more recently, of course, is the business uses. So how do you want to structure that, and I think if you look at the Pella bylaw and see. Does that apply to both residential and business? I think it's gonna help you get through it. Uh, there's also another. Uh, reference document, it's a white paper. That was produced on November thirtieth of two thousand and nine. From the Department of Housing and Community Development on nonconforming structures and uses. And it has some references to the chapter forty-eight. As to what's allowed under nonconforming at the state law level. So you may wanna check that out and see if there's any language that would be helpful. And I think it would be helpful for the public if you do at some point produce a draft. That people can, you know, respond to, I mean, right now, it's pretty open, so. I'm throwing out a couple of things here that'll stretch the board. If you're looking at a lakeside overlay district.
So just to, so that I have it straight in my head. You envision a lakeside overlay district to be sort of. Independent from any changes to the bylaw, it just sort of will deal with the lakes, and then you change. Potentially change the bylaw to deal with everything else.
Well, it would help, help you avoid all those nonconforming. Issues that occur around the lake, as I recall when I was a planner, there was a lot on Oak Street, people wanted to. Expand outside the footprint, you know, so they had more living space. No, can't do it, so they went up. So they built a two-story house. And, you know, instead of a one-story.
Yeah.
You know, examples.
Yeah, I mean, though that may, I mean, that's. That train may have left the station a while back.
It would be two separate bylaws. Right.
No, I understand, but I mean, I'm just thinking over by, cognamond, I mean, that may. You may all, you may just end up creating a. Getting further and further where houses are getting, you know, or, or expanding and building up and what have you, I mean, I, I do wonder if that just. Where that's going, because everything's built up over there, and so it's a question of. Now you're then allowing it to get.
Probably buy. Care down and build bigger.
Correct, and so what? You, you think that the lake. Uh, a proposed overlay district would. Reduce that and cause them to expand the existing? Or would they simply just expand the existing and build? Right, I'm just one, I, I, I don't, I'm wondering how you game theory that out on the lakes, and I, I, I think that's just. It's an interesting concept, I'm just not sure. I think it's gonna take some. Thinking and research and input from a bunch of different folks to kind of figure out. That part of it. And it may be outside the scope of this. But I don't know.
Well, I mean, I can see where if we allow expansion beyond the footprint. The very next minute, we can get a flood of folks from the lake wanting to make their thousand square foot houses into twenty-five hundred square foot house on the same lot.
Yeah, and maybe, and I misunderstand, I mean, it sounded like Marcus was doing it almost by right, not, not.
Well, and you would have to. Establish the dimensions, I mean, you'd still need set, you would still need setbacks and. And so forth, but you could hopefully avoid. Having to have. The process of getting. Uh, special permit to do. Things on those smaller lots.
But aren't some of those, I mean, some of those are, well. And this is pre-existing nonconforming. Well, I guess they are.
They are now, a lot of them.
Yeah, if you just go with setbacks. Most people, they go straight to the zoning Board of Appeals before they even come to us now.
Correct, I mean, it seems like the lakes is mostly a setback issue. And so I don't know if. I don't know. I don't know if this necessarily allows. I guess I didn't envision this necessarily as. You know, completely eliminating setbacks, right, I mean, it's not, that's not the idea, the idea is to sort of expand. Outside of a footprint if you. You know, and something that has. I mean, it's not the.
Firing to be contained within the footprint. That creates. So if we can describe the dimensions of those lots that are, that's acceptable. Then it allows people to go outside the footprint, but not to go crazy and. You know.
But the, the lake. The lakes have two problems, right, with this, which is. And maybe more, but at least two, they have a prob, there's some businesses. That have problems, right, that are in residential zoning down there. Um, and then there are some residences which basically have. Um, setback issues, right, they're, they're, they don't have the setbacks, and so they're nonconforming for that reason. That's, that's pretty uniquely a lake issue. I'm not sure that exists anywhere else, and for the most part. In the rest of Southwick where there is setback issues that are making it nonconforming use. I, I don't think it is, but I, I could be wrong, and I'm not thinking of anything that's jumped into mind that. Uh, you know, the rest of Southwick seems to have a. Zoning. Nonconforming use issue, not a. You know, foot and inches. Issue. And that's the lakes, yeah, has, that is their primary issue. I don't, I'm. I mean, it's food for thought as to how we work that in. I mean, I don't. I guess we, they mean, the other part of it is we've been trying to get away from overlay districts, I think.
Yeah.
Some degree, um, but I mean, I do understand that where you're coming from was. Um, all right, any?
Do we have an inventory of all the non-conforming uses?
That's a fair question. I don't know if we do.
Straight up. Yeah. John's going, John, John's going, don't even think about it.
And I don't, I don't know how that, how there would be created, so.
Wrong, wrong.
It seems like a job for this life board is really what I.
I would agree.
Qualified consultant side there.
Um. Yeah, just invite every non-conforming just to come to the meeting, so we'll just kind of go through that whole. List. Um. Yeah, no, it's. I gotta digest that one, Marcus. Um. But I do, I kind of like where your heads at. I just gotta think through the way that plays out. Uh, any other? Public, was I in public comments or town officials? I could not have town official.
Official anymore.
So I'm, I was on public comments. Any other public comments? You got.
Other question, uh, in the hotel in forty-five Pine Road. Why can't the planning board attack this issue to just businesses to start with?
Um. It's a. Fair question. But again, that's just folks, that's that's almost creating lakes versus not, right? I mean, to some degree. Um, there's also a component of it. You know, I mean, I get. That Craig's is in a lot of people's minds, because that's the most recent one, but we've dealt with a bunch of these and they've been. I mean, you have the campground up there. You have the um. Um. The house on College Highway that was in the back. You have um. You have the one that was just mentioned about two fifty. Um, I mean, it's come up a lot and those are residences, right? And so. You know, I I guess I have in my mind. Some degree. College Highway has a bunch of. Residential. Properties. In. Business or agricultural zones. Um, that have been there for a long time and. May very well be something that. You could redevelop into a residential use there that provides more units and maybe a useful thing on a. On on a road like College Highway to have that. Access, um, and so. I didn't necessarily want to limit it to businesses for, in that regard, um. So I don't. But I get where you're coming from. I mean, I, you know, it does. I don't know, there's just a bunch of. It seems like there's a lakes issue and then there's another issue, and then it also seems like there's a. There's a um. Um. Business and a residential issue when it comes to the the rest of the town. So. Um, it's just a question of finding that sweet spot for all. At least in my mind. Um. All right, um, anything else, anger, are you? And by the way, you're a official now, you know, so you can um.
I understand.
You can speed up on that. Um, so uh, any other public comments? Okay. Um. Anybody wish to take a shot at? Putting something on paper?
I feel like Mister Goddard is staring at me through the owl. I feel the weight, I can feel the weight of his eyes. Um, I will certainly.
I was just thinking, yes, but I didn't say it out loud, did I?
I I I can certainly try to take a stab at, um. Trying to add some edits. And perhaps if Mister Phelps would be so kind as to forward me some of uh, the documentation that he mentioned, including. The non-conforming state law document that he mentioned, I can utilize that as well as the guidance of our discussion tonight. Alongside Mister Goddard to try to put something together for our next meeting so that the public can have their input on it.
Yeah, I think that's worthwhile and sort of, it doesn't even have to be. All that formal, it can just be sort of. Phrasing and and. Sentences and whatever else just capture concepts, you know, I mean, I, it's, I think it's just. Trying to get a. Pen to paper to at least. Start thinking about how to. Construct it, because it. I don't know. There's a lot to think through with that. Um. All right, anything else before we um? Continue it on? Okay. Uh, do I hear? A motion to continue this public hearing to. Seven forty on the twelve.
Dave Spina, so move.
Dick Cut singer second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Dick Cut singer, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
Okay. Let us continue. We are through the public hearing. Right on time.
Yeah, as always. I don't know where you got your clock from, but I take it back.
Uh. Yeah, see if props. Um, still here, if not, we can um. Take uh. Uh, noble steed. No one else here, but is there anybody here for anything else? In particular? Okay. You're always here.
He's kind of charging you rent.
No. Why don't we go to Noble Steed since uh, the folks do it for that?
Sure.
Um.
So in everybody's folder and. Yes, uh, and I don't think I have it, um. Scan down this, give me one second.
What do you open up this?
Uh, so, yes, why don't I share a a quick update? Um. Following the discussion uh, from the last meeting. Uh. On the seventh, we discussed. Some. Correspondence shared by. Paul Scott, the building inspector, related to. Thirteen um, compliance items that had. Fallen, by the way, and concerns over progress. And the pace of construction. Um, over at the Noble Steed uh, subdivision. But coming out of that. And reflecting upon um. Conversations that I've had with uh, town council and other town officials. Essentially, we were. Uh, building towards uh, an opportunity in correspondence to. Bring the developer uh, to the table, uh, and potentially examine. Uh, pursuing funds. Um. That are currently secured through performance bond. Uh, subsequent to that meeting, uh, shortly thereafter, um. The developer reached out to me. Independently, um, so that we could meet and review. Some of the concerns that were raised in correspondence, um. It, and that was an all-encompassing uh, discussion, not only in what called the status of uh, work on the ground. Uh, but also uh, the concerns over. Uh, open space uh, violations. And stormwater issues and so on and so forth. Uh, following that meeting, the developer has met uh, with Mister Brown over DPWNI. Three times. Uh, to. Independently. Uh, develop a plan to, let's say, return to compliance. Over at the subdivision and provide us with a. Generally. Binding timeframe. Um, to. Proceed with the work. Okay. Um, Jesse, if you'd like, you're welcome to come on up. Uh. Jesse, I think can speak in uh, more specific terms about um, some of the commitments that he's offered. Um. In specific discussions with Mister Brown, I was, was not present for that specific section, so I don't want to put words in your mouth. Um. But to the point of returning to co, to compliance, um, and making meaningful progress, I can report that he has shared with us. Draft covert um, drawings prepared by a structural engineer. Um, that are in the midst of um. He received some comments from Randy, but they're still in development, um, but that is a meaningful step forward. And uh, today we received the draft conservation restriction updated to reflect current administration in the current form available through the state. Um, so I will be. Coordinating with conservation to uh, help. Facilitate that process. Um. Although I'll give you a a chance to uh, share information you like, uh, Jesse, um, I inclination and uh, recommendation. Um. Is that. Uh, we take this um, this offer of a of a schedule. Uh, and the continued. Workover at Noble Steed. Uh, as an opportunity for everyone uh, to collaborate and work together. Um, it's. Jesse's offered to meet uh, with Randy and I on a, on a regular basis. I think it helps uh, everyone, uh, and it's good to keep the planning board. Um, at least. Up to speed in terms of what the concerns are. Um, and how things are moving forward. So we'll likely, my recommendation to keep this on as the old business on a semi-monthly basis, just to make sure we. Um. Make, we can take a look and say, okay, these are, I know, proceeding according, these are being shuffled around or what have.
Um, anything you want to add, Jesse?
Um, just that. Um. I created this schedule with both Johnny and Randy, uh, based off of. Randy, like his emphasis items on this. And um. You know, we applied dates to it and then went back and forth. That's why. You know, we mul, we met multiple times over the last two, two weeks, um. To come up with like. I I I feel it's like a good game plan moving forward to trying. Close out this project.
Right.
And uh. Like John was saying, we do have a draft. Or a plan for the cover of the year. I I don't have any other copies of it, so. Um. I've. Passed it over to Randy, who used to pick back comments. We went over it a second time after that. It's back in the engineers' side making the changes to. Many comments from there. Um, and then. I submitted the um, conservation restriction draft to John, Sabrina and Randy today. Um. If there's any changes that need to be made. I'll hear back from them on that. Um, some of these items are contingent upon that restriction. And I noted them on here, um.
So when it's not noted, like the drainage and stuff, is that contingent on?
No.
Okay.
When, when it has a date, like a completion date, like a start date and completion date.
It's not contingent.
It's not contingent upon, yeah. And. In my defense. Back when I had submitted the. Conservation restriction last year. The resubmital, because I. I guess it wasn't signed and, you know, we were moving forward with the car, Gullbert. We got the brakes put on us from Sabrina. And then I provided the conservation restriction in the old form, which I didn't know there was even a new form.
Yep.
Again, to be signed and. Um. At that point. Um. I was told to halt any progress with like, within like the. Not in the roadway, basically. So it was like, there's nothing up, like, once I had the structures and stuff, I can't do any like. Uh, the water poly basins or anything like that. Then we got it, the new form. And, you know, we finally got that back from our lawyers and got that. Submitted. I know it took longer than expected, but.
Well, it seems like we have a. Decent schedule in place. To kind of move forward. Um, any questions from the board? Comments? All right, um, well, I may just obviously keep in touch with Randy and and John and um.
Yeah, what we've been doing, like, so we met on Monday. Um. And so we'll meet again in two weeks. Um, based on. Uh, John and Randy's availability. And also, I've been updating them, even if I'm not doing anything out there on a weekly basis of what I've been doing.
It's fair to say that. I mean, Jesse is working with um. A uh, well, he's consultant for, I'm gonna call it, reporting and compliance uh, matters out there.
Yeah, correct, uh, Jeff Smith. I've, I've hired Jeff Smith. Since last year. And he's handling all our. Like, if there's like erosion control issue or something, he goes out there and. You know, checks it and then reports and, well, does report to me, but but lets me know what's going on and I go and fix it. And then he sends a report to the conservation. So like all the issues that we had with conservation in the past, we've. Gotten rid of by do, by doing this.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, it it seems like everybody's. Working together, there's communication, and I think that if we keep doing this, this will. We'll get this done and move to the finish line. So.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, Jesse.
There you go. I give.
Thanks, Jesse.
Oh, yeah. Um. What did we, um? Do we want to do the shutdown or do we not?
So, well. Well, that's uh. I gotta refresh my memories. Okay, so we did, we received um. An opinion letter by the owners, um. Attorney. We also dug through, based on. Talent or any concern. Whether or not state law is preempting. Your ability. For structures to be. Modified, which is not so much for a property modified. The determination was that our local. Restrictions and type of departmental are valid. Uh, so following that, after Mister Lubeck has provided a draft modification to the commercial recreation. Um. Bylaw. Right now, the property. Uh. Is not operating under a special permit under commercial recreation. Oh, I better parse my language under the. Commercial recreation by law as it's currently written. Um. So there's modifications in there. Uh. With the intention to allow. Some flexibility. Um, and allow that bylaw to then modify to this. Site, whereas right now, because of its. Zoning, I mean, partially or the majority of the in that board, sure, in conservation districts. Um, concert, a commercial recreation would not be. Allowable. So we, uh, if it. Better teach you, perhaps we best chew it up and we can. Uh. Provide some um, comments. We might pretty much with the back at the next meeting, and we can hold until everybody to. Um. Come and discuss how this would. Affect opportunities for improvement. And we consider how that might affect other things, should that there is an operation.
Right, and the other part of it is, right, is whether. This is more their preference down the line or whether this is something that. This is more the preference down the line or whether this is something that. If there are tweaks to this. Nonconforming one, they can probably. Do what they wanted to do and so. If it's somewhat irrelevant, or this is someone who could, this is somewhat icing on top of what they want.
Uh, it may be. Uh, gosling in the waistband, depending on what comes out of discussions.
Yeah, okay. All right, yeah, I mean, I would say. Everybody has these, right? Yeah, let's just take them, take a look through them. See the reasonableness of them, see play them out and then, um. More about them at the next meeting. Uh, we can touch base with him at some point.
Sure, I just don't want to lose that, uh, discussion.
Yep. Okay.
I'd like to work it done on this, we can have a look at a few other ones we want to change in there.
You want to submit, you just. Go through it. Um, let's wait till a meeting that you're not here and we'll assign you to.
I've only missed three in. Twelve years.
Well, you know. Different persons here without your hat. Um, how's the production plan? Uh, planning board review and vote to approve.
Okay, following. The meeting where we introduced this, excuse me, this, the review component of the final draft. EBDC went back and took a closer look at that first paragraph under section one point two. This is where we, uh, where Mr. Spina, in particular, honed in on some language that didn't seem to quite. That the assigned percentages of. Uh, eligible. Affordable. Housing, uh, our current housing stock and so on and so forth. Um, if you are satisfied, that was comment number one, comment number two related to the overlay maps. Um, that are elsewhere in this, uh, I am working through a request to see if we can just. Call that information and, uh, we have the ability, um, within plenty of office to make a hybrid. That will call the development opportunities and constraints. Of math. Um, on its own, but I don't think that that is. It hasn't been ignored, but I don't think it'll affect the content of this.
Okay, so we can. If we're satisfied with this, we can vote on. The adoption, it's just more.
I think, uh, in this particular case, we are voting for, uh, to approve. Um, at which point we submit it to the select board and then it goes to the state.
Yes.
We took me zoom in.
No, that's okay. Yep.
What's the footnote?
Let's do the data reference.
And if I recall, somewhere later on, it talks about. Exactly what. Affordable to the eighty percent of us, right, right, it gives a percentage of income or something like that, yeah, yeah, right, so that, that. I think this as written clarifies my. Or addresses my comment.
All right, anything else on the board? Okay, um. All right, then do I? Give a motion to approve the town of South Lake housing production plan and send it over to the select board.
Dave Spina, so moved.
Richard Ottinger, second.
We're well called vote by authority, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Dick Ottinger, aye.
Jessica Thor and aye.
Hey. That is all set, um.
I would admit that.
What do we have? Craig's Tea House, I'm working response to discussions points regarding.
I'll just, uh, distribute. Uh, my review comments. So we're, uh, we're talking about the employee parking area. Uh, I got some feedback that was informed by the. Previous survey plan, Mr. Southley provided earlier in two thousand and three. Uh, that I think. We'll start to add some texture to that discussion, uh, walkways, um, and the patio west of the existing. Um. Enclosed deck area. Um. And the mobile refrigeration units in Stockton fence. The west side of the building, those are the three points that we want to hone in a little bit greater detail. Uh, particularly, so why don't I, uh, just, well, unless everybody really, uh, wishes to go through it. Um. Uh, practice best, uh, distributed. At the next meeting, we can say, okay, this considers the draft, uh, if you're satisfied, we'll send it over to Art. Uh, but we can make that action next week.
Yep.
Okay, I will share that, uh, with. You, Jessica and Dick, we are email. Everyone, about that.
All right.
I don't know about the David twins over here, but we appreciate it. You said everybody but us. First it's age, now it's names, I see. Let's say, you know, you're gonna bring up the fact that I don't have a hat on.
Mm-hmm. Um, all right, routine business. We had a sweep going there, uh, planning board member and staff comments.
I. Have a couple of quick. Hopefully, let's see, we can do that. So, uh. As part of, um. You know, called the permanent review process for Noble Steed. Uh. There, it's apparent to me that there have been, there's been some erosion, there's been mistakes made by. Private counsel, there's been some mistakes made by, you know, town council, uh, to minor and lesser degrees. What is this all related to? This is section forty four, uh, within your packets there, I have a plot plan. For a proposed unit. Over at the Greens East subdivision, it's another flexible residential. Um. District. Subdivision. Within the language of the permit, um, it indicates that the individual lot plans are to be submitted to the planning board for review. Uh, as far as I, uh, was able to tell in green, uh. During the turnover, this was managed as an administrative item. Uh, from the town planner's desk. Go reaching for the vast, if we wish to. Uh, to closely look at that language, uh, moving forward in future permits, then, then so be it. However, it exists, uh, well, so I bring it before you. Just to. That's what, uh, we're working with.
Yeah, and we gotta probably be more careful, I mean, I think we picked up on this at some point along in the decision, maybe not on this topic, but about planning board versus planner. And how he designated it, right, and so that we don't have to necessarily see all this stuff that it can. Go through you, um. But, and that's fine, I mean, I, I would. Um. I think you can. Yeah, I'll leave it up to you as to whether you want to. Circulate it just to say you've circulated it or whether you want it. Call out what you think is. If something needs to be brought to the board's attention, I, but I mean, this, this looks.
In this.
Straightforward.
In this particular case, we're working with, uh, the same home development, uh, team using the same consultant that. I've been in plot plans all along. Um, so as long as everything's inside the setbacks.
Maybe worth just shooting, I guess. Right, to comply with the letter of the permit, let's, why don't you shoot a. When something comes in, shoot an email around or put it in the next sort of. Um, you know, email for the, for the meeting prep that just basically says. This came in, you can kind of look at it, I don't see.
Makes, makes sense to me.
So, okay. All right.
Uh, conveniently, that one happened to show up after I sent out the, uh, post began and everything else. Uh, but a good opportunity in light of, we'll call it a microscope that's looking at Noble Steed, to make sure that we're giving our best work. I have, I don't think I have any, but you should stop.
I thought you had another one.
Yeah, I, I thought I did too.
All right, but you kept the speech. Save one.
So save it exactly.
All right, anybody else have any? Comments or? Whatever. All right, um. Minutes, everybody's good with the minutes?
Yep, what you have in your fact, it reflects the potential minor changes by.
All right, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for February six?
Dave Spina, so moved.
Dick Ottinger, second.
A roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Dick Ottinger, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Jessica Thor and aye.
Okay. Mr. Sutton. Hmm, if he's here, I haven't seen him all night, no.
Make a motion to close. Dave Spina, second.
Uh, all of the favors say aye.
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 All opposed to stay here by themselves.
Have a good evening.